This is off my. Okay, starting soon. There we are, we're on. Are we on?
Yes.
Should be. Okay, we'll call the Town of Alexandria adjourned meeting to order on July 15th. This was adjourned from the July 8 meeting. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Apologize for being eight minutes late. We've had a lot of stuff that we're dealing with here today as everybody will find out or has found out on the news locally. And we're just getting our agenda and everything together here. So we don't have any minutes here to approve for right now. We'll go to the privilege of the floor. We've advertised the phone numbers and everything. And I guess the number that you have to call, if you have anything for privilege of the floor, is 315-778-5665. If we receive information or call after we start the meeting, we will stop and address the questions or the communication. So with that done, I'll go to number one. Budget analysis of New York State sales tax figures, which we have now, and our employee back-to-work status. Everybody has a chart in front of them. Talks about, shows the sales tax for the last three years. We forecasted for the second quarter of this year. We forecasted a decrease in sales tax of 25%. We have in front of us a decrease of 13.31%. So anybody have any comments on that or thoughts? My thoughts are that we forecasted 25%. That's what we base our layoffs on at the Highway Barn, because we targeted a certain dollar amount that we wanted to cut. My thoughts are that we're safe as of right now. This next quarter, we're gonna have to address it when it comes or when it happens. But my thoughts are that the Highway Barn has one more week of furlough left, along with tomorrow. Because they're a four-day week. So they're furloughed tomorrow and they're furloughed four 10-hour days next week. It's the original agreement that we have with them that the Highway Barn and the Highway Superintendent all agreed to. And my suggestion that I'd like to discuss is due to these numbers in front of us, we can bring the guys back to work on Monday. Are my thoughts.
I agree completely.
This is gonna be an up and down situation here. Hopefully it's not down, hopefully it's up. But because we've got another quarter to deal with and the spike that we're seeing locally now all of a sudden, who knows what that's gonna do to us? But if it does things to us that we have to change our plan, then we can change our plan.
We've realized the bulk of what we needed to say in regard to the 25%. Now we finally have information in regard to the income side, and it's not as bad as what we thought it was going to be.
Yeah.
So I think it's prudent to bring them back on Monday.
I mean, we also have the first quarter of this year that the sales tax was actually up by 10.19%. That that helps our situation out also. So the most recent quarter, as I said, is down 13.31% and we had forecasted 25%. That's what we based our furloughs on. And that's how we met the agreement with the Highway Barn, the Teamsters, I'm gonna say, and the Highway Superintendent. So I'll entertain a motion. I don't have a problem making the motion to bring the Highway Barn workers that are furloughed, all of them back to work effective on Monday. I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
Second? Discussion on that motion?
The, we had $36,000 with the first sales tax payment that we received. And then now, we were actually off $57,000. So the difference, so we were down, but the difference is $21,000. So that relatively speaking, that's not nearly what we thought it was going to be.
Yeah.
And I don't think there should be any prob, there won't be any problem. As you say, going down the line, if it ends up being back to the 25, and at this point, since there's only half the year left, it's gotta go in excess of that to even out at 25.
Yeah.
So anyway.
So that's really what we're saying here is this is a moving target. And as it moves and as it changes here, the town board's gonna have to adapt and adjust accordingly as far as employment status. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Motion passed. So I'm gonna hold the mic after the meeting until the guys are all back to work effective Monday. And we'll go from there. Number two item on the agenda is part-time labor ad applications discussion. We put an advertisement on Craigslist and Indeed. And on Indeed, we have four applicants. In the last 16 hours on Indeed, I called all four applicants. I have one who's not interested. I have another one who will not, is not going to move and live in this area for another two weeks. I have a third one that I left a message and I haven't heard back home. And I had a fourth one that I talked to quite a bit who's interested in the job. He's from Carthage, New York. His name is Dustin Passage. I have gotten references from him from places that he's worked. I've called those references. Everybody has notes in front of them of the references and their comments, their direct comments to me about his working capabilities. And the comments are all very positive. So other thing that if we were gonna make a motion to hire Dustin to work at the dump transfer site, we'd need him to go online and fill out our job application. And his hiring would probably, would have to be pending that completed application and our review of it. Anybody else have any other comments about this? So I'm hoping that we can make a motion tonight to hire him pending successful completion of the application and approval.
And that's at $15 an hour?
At $15 an hour.
And a max of how many hours a week?
We were saying, we set between two and three days.
So it's like maximum, like 24 hours?
Yes. Yeah, which is pretty much, which is exactly what I talked to him about today.
Okay, that's the other thing too, it's very clear exactly what we're talking about, yes.
Yeah, I told him the hours, the whole deal, you know. He's prepared to drive to Alexandria Bay. He said it's, he's been here many times. He knows it very well. It's a 40-minute drive from his house.
I'll make that motion if you need a motion.
Motion by Ron to hire Dustin on the grounds that he completes the application to the town and that we review it and it's satisfactory to us.
I'll second.
Second by John Stein. Any discussion?
That was just amazing. We, less than the edge.
I just wanna make sure I'm covering all the bases as far as to hire somebody and that. That application of ours is the key. So.
Yes, oh yeah. And your due diligence was also, that was real good.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, the people that I talked to that he's worked for were both people that he's worked for within the last month. One of the people that I talked to is a schoolteacher in Carthage for 32 years and she's known him for a long time. And had all good things to say about him. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Okay. What we've been doing with Jesse's, been taking vacation time, I believe is what it is, right? And so we've been moving the phone so that the taxpayers, when they call the Town of Alexandria, they don't have to deal with a message. And then in a case like certain days, they wouldn't, might not get called back immediately. So we've moved the phone into Nicole's office. She's answering both the town clerk's phone and her phone. She's finding, she's keeping a list. She did this last week also. She's keeping a list of the calls that come in. And I think last week she had nine, nine calls in one day. And she was able to answer questions and help eight of the nine workers. The other one wanted a document that Nicole is not able to do. We'd like to keep doing it that way. I think I was told that the message on the town clerk's answering machine right now sends the caller to the, to the town clerk's cell phone. I myself don't wanna do that. I wanna have us, I wanna have Nicole answer the phone. I think we've talked about this before. We'd like to have the taxpayers get a human voice when they call. And like I said, Nicole's been very successful at taking care of people's questions.
How is that on our system, our telephone system? Is that something that you can change?
I could get in there and change it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm very comfortable with that.
I just need a motion tonight to give me permission to go in there and change that message so that it just is a standard message out of the office. And like I said, there shouldn't be, the messages will be answered, the phone will be answered between 8:00 and 4:30 every day because Nicole's here. So we need to have a message that's before 8:00 and after 4:30 that tells them that they can call the town office.
To 8:40?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
To take the cell phone message off and to change the message like we're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by Ron?
I'll second that one.
Second by John. Any further discussion?
Just one. I was having a discussion, I'm not gonna name names, with a person and kind of related to what some of the things Nicole is doing. And this is not negative at all. And it got, my attention is, this isn't like additional bookkeeper work or that kind of stuff. This is completely different kind of work that she's taking on above and beyond what we're paying her for. You know, we initially hired her for bookkeeper stuff, then we added all the water and sewer stuff. And now we're adding something else on here. If this was a totally different person, in this case anyways, we have in our budget money for somebody to come in as a deputy town clerk. I'm just wondering if this might be something we might wanna be using some of that money to compensate a person who's doing work outside of her actual employment.
Yeah.
You know, this is, again, this is a totally different person.
That's a good plan. I think we should all think about that. We have a meeting in a week that we can actually take further action if you want to on that. I think we should look at the budget and see what the numbers are in the different categories for different, the things that Nicole is doing. We had a list that we put together a while back that Nicole, since we hired her as bookkeeper, has taken on nine additional job duties.
Well, I'm just literally, she's acting as a deputy clerk, which we have a budget line item for that.
Yeah. So I think you have a good point, Mike. I think we should look into that and we should look at those items and see if that needs to be changed.
I'm not just trying to throw money at her. I'm just saying that would just, that's just fair.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's my only comment on this. But I'm in favor.
All those in favor of having Nicole do this process and changing that message so that it doesn't refer the callers to a cell phone? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Next one, number four, minutes from the last meeting, July 8. I guess I'll ask you, Mike, you've talked about that, you know that the, which this isn't on now, so we're gonna have to rely on this. Is that this recorder was turned on and went into executive session. And because there's things in executive session that have to stay in executive session, we've deleted everything on there and we do have a proper recording of the public meeting through our system that we have in here. So we're gonna ask our town clerk to transcribe the minutes from that system, which she can access. And I know other different people that have gone to those recordings on the YouTube site and say it's very clear and it works very well.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a backup deal or backing up each other in case there's a problem. So I need, I'll take a motion to do, transcribe the minutes for the July 8 meeting from the YouTube recording.
I would only question whether we need to because normally the town clerk attends the meeting and doesn't need that at all. So it would seem like.
It's a good point.
She could figure it out on her own.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is probably not something that requires a motion.
No.
It just, you just, we just need to let her know that unfortunately that can't be used.
Right.
That's all.
But these microphones are very, very good. I've listened a couple of times to archive meetings and you can, the audio is very good.
Yeah. Okay, we'll go to number five. Butterfield Dock is closed due to issue with the flotation. The contractor, I met down there with the contractor this morning. He doesn't have any idea what's going on, but the Butterfield Dock is sinking. And he's gonna be here first thing tomorrow. He's got some ideas about how to possibly correct it or fix it. He's not 100% sure what's wrong, so it's hard for him to figure out exactly what he needs to do. But he's gonna be here tomorrow with his worker and he's gonna, they're gonna have to go underwater, under the docks, and they're gonna investigate to see what's going on.
Now, is this the person that did the foaming?
Is this what?
The person that foamed the docks is looking at this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I already know the answer is, I just need to ask it. There's gonna be a charge for them to come take a look at that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, if this turns out to be their problem.
I'm just, I'm just, it's out there.
This, this, the owner of that company that foamed the docks today was, you know, he's very upset about this. And we didn't come right out and discuss what's gonna do, but he said he would be here and look at it tomorrow and find out what's going on. And I, and I agree with where we're going here and that is that this is not our fault.
Right, I'm just trying to, I didn't look at the docks themselves, but all the tubes that support that dock were filled with foam? How is it possible?
I don't, that just blows my mind.
Which means, I mean, in order for the water to get into the tubes, it's gotta displace the air. The air's been displaced by the foam, so there should be no room for the water, therefore it shouldn't be able to sink.
You would think.
We were just talking at the last meeting how these docks should be good for another 20, 25 years.
You would, yeah, no, I, that just blows my, Frank told me that doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
For 20, 25 days.
Days, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Goes by quick.
So I would hope that they would look at it and not charge us.
We gotta wait to see the problem.
We already have, we have 35 grand into this. And if this just keeps going and going, it's after a while you gotta wonder.
I mean, the real key to this is that they're gonna have to look at it. And as John just said, we gotta find out what the problem is and why. Is it his foam? Is it something he did? Is it something we did or is it something that nature stuff?
I don't know, I don't.
All right, let's say one of the tubes rusted off and floated away.
Still on the foam, isn't it?
What's that?
The foam still on the floor.
Yeah, it just, I mean, because.
We gotta wait to see if the guy can go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it turns out it's on us, something structural, then it's on us.
Yeah.
But from, I mean, from the outside, you can see the tubes, can you, from the way as you walk on the dock?
They fill these tubes with foam, right? They fill them with foam.
Fill them off.
Right.
I mean, I saw the holes they put in the tubes to make sure the foam got everywhere. I believe they put a foam hole every four to six feet.
But you would think when they pump it full of foam, as it filled in, it would come out these holes to demonstrate that it's filled all the tubes.
Yeah. You could see places where it did come out.
We gotta wait to see that.
Yeah. Okay, number six is the highway report. The new tractor that they were mowing the sides of the lawn had a problem and it was a water town. It had emission problems. It's back and both tractors are mowing. They've installed driveway pipes. They finished stitching on Swat Hollow Road and clean up again, ongoing drainage problems. They picked up large mattress at the, at the something pit, at the brush pit. Yeah. It was dropped off at Newberry's. They says if we have any questions, to give them a call. Well, I'll be giving them a call later to talk to them about this, about this back-to-work deal. And then the last, no, actually, there's two more items on the agenda. Request to have the Highway Superintendent to attend our July 22 board meeting. We're gonna have a lot of stuff. We're gonna be talking about in relation to the finances and the sales tax and everything. So I'd like to officially request that Highway Superintendent be here. And I also put in there a budget workshop, which really is, we're gonna be analyzing this budget kind of just like we just briefly did with this report and actually come up with some dollars and cents figures. Ronnie, which you can help us with to say what, show what we've seen by what the layoffs have been so far.
May Nicole have that, I'm sure.
And the only other thing here is that, and this is just for everybody to look at and not give an answer to tonight because I have not ordered this sign yet. Since a lot of these regulations and the things that we've changed at the transfer site, which everything is going very smoothly, we have the non-town taxpayers registering for permits. That's worked out good. We're starting to get a bunch of those in. One of the things that has been said here is that when you turn into the transfer site, you, there's no sign down by the turn. And we talked a few years ago about putting a sign and we never did anything. Okay, talking about putting a sign similar to this. Because right now you have to go all the way into the gate. And the only thing you learn at the gate is what the hours are. You don't learn what we take. You don't learn what we don't take. One of the things that was brought up a month ago or so was that we considered putting a construction dumpster up there. And Jamie Payton worked up there one weekend. He worked up there one week. And he had three or four people come to him with construction debris. And he said, "We don't take it." And they said, "Well, where do we take it then?" And Jamie said, "One and a half miles down the road to Rice, Newberry's pit." And situation is, you got a taxpayer, he's in business, and we don't need, and I agree, it was said to me, and I think Ronnie was the first one that brought it up, we don't need to be in competition with. Let's send that stuff to, he takes that stuff. He has facilities, he has containers, he has the equipment to handle it. So that's just one of the many things that we can, we should have on this sign.
How big do you propose to make this sign?
I'm sorry?
How big?
Four by eight.
Okay. Yeah, we wanna make a big enough so you can have a look.
Went down there today and looked at it with Jay and Jamie. They're gonna bring the tractor over there and dig a couple of holes and put some sonotubes in and put two six by sixes up out of the sonotubes. The poles are gonna be six feet apart. Sign's gonna be one-sided, four by eight.
Okay.
And we think it's gonna, we're saying four by eight because we're getting a fair amount of stuff on this sign.
Yeah. I just wanna, I don't wanna be, you know, so small that people, you wanna make it so people can actually read it.
Yeah. Speaking of signs, they put the sign up, one new sign up at Goose Bay and the trailers were 22 trailers a week ago. And as of yesterday, there was nine trailers. So the message is getting across there. I have yet to do the parking ticket thing that we talked a little bit about that we'd like to order some tickets and notices that we can put on the trailers that aren't moving, that need to move.
Do I tell the license plate numbers?
We don't have that yet. We haven't taken license plate numbers.
No, I'm saying like these signs that are here.
Yeah.
If you wrote down those license plate numbers and next week you saw the same license plate number, you know, and been there for a week.
So this is really the first week with the sign up. It's starting to work, so I'm trying to give them a little bit of a grace period here. I would, I used to get calls every weekend of people that were going to use that lot for the weekend and there was no room for them to put their truck or trailer. Now there is some room. And we need to get the rest of the people that are in violation of the 48-hour regulation to move the trailers, so.
The other problem that, at least I noticed is, what people do is they go in one and they just unhook their trailer and they drive out the other. If they would at least back them in.
Yeah.
So you could maximize the use of that front because it's pretty big.
The trailers that are in there now that are not hooked to vehicles are all backed in. I will say that.
You know how they do it, but.
Because I think they planned on leaving them there for a while.
They're all backed in, you know, you can take, you know, you can get a lot of trailers in that way.
Yeah. So I also gave Nicole permission to order the speed limit sign because the village board approved at last night's meeting that they would split the cost of the speed limit sign with us. And we'd already passed that motion here. So I told her today to order that. That's really all I have. Anybody got anything else?
I'd just like to make a little statement in regard to the COVID-19 with the county and particularly Town of Alexandria, Town of Clayton. And there's been a little bit on the news in the last two days that we're seeing what was considered a spike in Jefferson County. Jefferson County, I believe, we only have something like 115 cases since this whole thing started. And we've got about 120,000 people that live in the county. So those numbers are, when you compare it to other areas, are very good. What we're seeing, and I think it's a result of a little bit of fatigue, having this go on as long as it is, we're seeing people that are not adhering to the rules, which the two biggest ones are wearing masks when you cannot socially distance six feet. And the other is to, when you're not wearing a mask, socially distance at least six feet. There are businesses in Clayton that are now closed for 24 hours to do quote-unquote what the health department calls deep cleaning. We have a couple in Alexandria Bay that are doing the same thing. It's been a number of months to get where we are today as far as starting to reopen businesses. And it would be a real shame to go backwards and have the governor's office get involved and start going literally backwards to phase three, which would eliminate some of the things that we're kind of taking for granted now. So the reason I bring it up is that it's a real problem. Jefferson County has been fortunate enough not to experience too much exposure, but we're starting to see numbers go in the wrong direction. I've spoken with Phil Reed on an almost daily basis. He's been very helpful with this. He talks with Scott Gray, who is a member of the North Country Control Room, which are 10 people that are in charge of the entire multiple county district. And there is a Chamber of Commerce email going out to all members. Hopefully it's already gone out in the last hour. Just reiterating how serious this really is. And people need to wear masks anytime you're less than six feet and anytime you're walking around inside. So it's a combination of individual responsibility and also businesses' responsibility. It needs to be done or we're going to have problems and we're gonna go backwards. Thank you.
Is it, I thought the governor mandated that anytime you're inside any of these places, you have to have a mask on.
Right.
So it's even an option anymore.
If you're, if you're at a restaurant, you're allowed to take it off while you're sitting at a table.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but if you wanna use a restroom, you get up from the, you put your mask on, you get up from the table, have it on when you're away.
Right.
But if you're in a gift shop, if you're in any other kind of store. But if you're in a gift shop, if you're in any other kinda store where you come in, grocery store, convenience store, ice cream shop, whatever. Where you come in and you're not seated at a table, you have to have a mask on. Yeah, and it is, it's no, I don't know if it was considered a suggestion before. But now it has the, the, the weight of financial penalties.
Right.
And it's for the customer and the business owner. So the, the, the business owner can't blame the customer and the customer can't blame the business owner. There's gonna be, the signage is already supposed to be there, the chamber's coming up with a new sign to reiterate. And it'll be right at entrances to all these businesses, that you have to have a mask on. No ifs, ands, or buts, or don't go in.
As Sue and I were in, in Watertown this morning, I happened to go to Walmart. Uh, out on Route Three, and they have three entrances, two of them were closed. You can only go on the, the grocery store entrance and you couldn't, you couldn't even go out the other ones, you could only get in and out this one. They had a security guard outdoors and it, and they had like a long line, like they lined up a bunch of stuff, so you had to go through this narrow passes before you even got to the door. And everybody, they, they made sure, everybody, and then, 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 now they're, they're counting everybody. They got to a certain number, they closed the door.
Right. Yeah, the people, people are entitled to their personal beliefs over whether or not they should wear a mask. But going into a business is, it's not negotiable.
No.
You, you either wear the mask or you don't go in?
And we, we also, not that I want to, but we had to the mall this morning as well. And there was a, a women's clothing store that, you know, like the, if you only allow so many people in there. They had a line of people, I mean, we're not talking about two or three people, we're talking about thirty people lined up because it was, they had reached the limit on the, inside the store. They had to wait for somebody to leave before somebody could, you know, could enter.
Yeah. That's the way it's gotta be.
Yeah, that's the way it's gotta be.
Yeah. Cause if the numbers get out of whack, we're gonna go backwards.
Yeah, yeah.
And nobody wants that.
Well, it's, it's just, it's how, it's how serious it is.
Yeah, it is.
And what people are, what businesses are, are doing, you know, to reflect that.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have, anybody else have anything else or do we do a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Are we, we're just-
We're actually closing the meeting, I'm sorry.
Right.
Okay, we're, we're not adjourning to-
We're adjourning, we're not adjourning it to another meeting.
This is it, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Cause our next meeting's a regular meeting and we'll be able to do whatever we can from today. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ron? Second by Mike, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Thank you.